Okay. Hi, everybody. It is 6:30. So I'd like to call it a order. The regular held by Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for November 4th, 2021. So Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda?
It was just you guys got, um, Don wanted to talk a little bit more about CEAs, but we'll piggyback off our first conversation and the second thing, pretty late, almost 5 o'clock. Laura, Ricky had sent an email and I sent over. Those are the only two additions. Thank you.
Hey. Okay, so under communications and announcements. The first announcement I would like to make is that the Woodstock Planning Board is holding a workshop meeting on December 15th for the sole purpose of discussing issues in the scenic overlay, the code and issues that we're having in the scenic overlay with development. I invite everybody from the Woodstock Environmental Commission, the Tree Committee, the zoning committee, the town board, to come to that meeting because in that meeting, we are going to discuss the issues that you all have pertaining to the scenic overlay. Not going to discuss it tonight. It's on the December 15th. Okay.
16th, Peter.
16th.
16th, sorry. Okay. So on the communications announcements, the planning board wants to thank and acknowledge the Woodstock Land Conservancy for their work on the CEA project. There's emails and photographs from H-Star and Cornet regarding the weight project, which is on top of the mountain. Email from Ross and Cass regarding the weight issue. Email from Garrison and Grant Lyons regarding the eligible facilities applications. Email from Ken Panza regarding the Aquafor Protection Working Group. There's the 2020, the 2022 calendar from Mrs. Gray for the review and approval received November 2nd. There's an email from H. Harris regarding the local tree cutting and emails and photos from Montserrat received November 4th. An email from V. Benedict regarding the Cooligan case again up on the scenic overlay. So under new business and scheduled meetings, we have a public hearing. And that public hearing is the start now. The public hearing is for Aaron Van de Bogart III and Gregory Van de Bogart, Planning Board Case 21-1132A. This is a virtual public hearing for a subdivision application for a lot line revision to transfer 101.6 acres in the R5 and scenic overlay zoning districts located at 90 and 29 Aaron's Way. It was originally 104.9 acres and the other one is originally 18.46 acres. This is going to result in two lots of five acres and one of 119 acres in Mount Tremper. And the representative is Gregory Van de Bogart. So sir, if you'd like to explain to the board. Oh, first, I'm sorry. Let me entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want this map or do you want their proposal?
Their proposal would be great. It's, it's probably easier to see. Is Gregory here?
Yes.
Okay. Hey Greg, why don't you tell the planning board and the public what it is that you want to do up there?
So the situation is this land was sold by my grandfather passed on to my father. He's kept it all these years. He's now 83 years old. He can't afford to pay the taxes on it anymore. We did put the 100 acres in the Forest Preserve Act. But it's even become difficult for him to pay the taxes on that now with it in the Forest Preserve Act. So I'm looking to edit on my property, keep it in the Forest Preserve Act and of course pay the taxes on it and hopefully pass it on to my son someday and keep it, keep it from being developed or built on.
Is this the correct drawing or do you want something else?
That's just the forest preserve. That's, yeah, that's just their forest preserve. That's not it. Um, there was a separate email duty that had the plans.
Okay, just a minute.
Okay, there you go. Flip it around.
Um, I don't know if I can flip it around. Let me see. Yeah. Let's see, counterclockwise. Is that all right? I can take it out.
Yeah, just zoom out a little bit. Okay, so basically everybody can see that the entrance comes and they have access all the way up. And in the lower part of your screen, you'll see the five acre lot that's going to go to the senior. And the rest of it will be with Gregory's lot. So planning board members have any questions regarding this application? Does any other members of the public would like to comment or have questions regarding this application? Melissa? Yeah?
Um, so what would the total lot be going into the forest preserve?
I have that. Hang on. 119.659 acres.
Nice.
But it was already, um, it was already more, yeah, nice. There you go. There's your answer.
I don't think, I don't, it's not the 119 that'll be going into the Forest Preserve Act. It'll be the original 101.
All right, because we're taking out, right, because there's a piece that's not in it. So, yeah.
So that I'm adding on to it is not in the Forest Preserve Act. The team coined something.
Right. Right. Sorry, Greg. You're right.
Melissa, did you get any letters?
Don, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Thanks, Greg. No, there was no, none of his neighbors had any concerns at all.
Okay, and is there anybody from the public hearing tonight have questions for Gregory? No? Well then, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And let me get my here. So we'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Greg, there you go.
Greg, I'll be in touch. Some paperwork and stuff. We'll talk next week.
Good luck.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. We now have also a public hearing, a continued public hearing from a recessed one, which is the Mark and Harriet DeSwan Arons Case SUP number 21-0661. This is a recessed virtual public hearing for a special use permit application for construction of a new house and other projects located in the R5 and scenic overlay zoning districts at 132 Valley View Way in Woodstock. And the representative is Brad Will. And I would just want to point out this. That for everybody, for everybody on the town board, tree committees, Woodstock Environmental Commission, any perceived violations of the zoning code by anyone, town board members, WC members or the general public or the tree committee have to be directed to the ZEO, not the planning board. The planning board will not entertain any issues of code violations, enforcement or remedies on any site. Even if there is a perceived violation of any site plan approved by the planning board, it still has to be taken to the ZEO. In this particular case, the ZEO determined there was no violation and the planning board has received no violations from the building department. So at this case, we have no violations. And Brad has a chance to respond to some of the questions before. We're not going to entertain any of the questions that we went through at the last meeting. We've seen the pictures. We've seen what happened. But it's not on our purview. What we are doing now is to complete these application for this house.
Peter?
Yes?
A question. Is it the planning board's purview to allow access for a site visit requested by the tree committee or does the zoning enforcement officer give the tree committee permission to do a site visit? I still haven't seen the site. So I can't tell you what the tree committee thinks of what happened up there because, you know, two requests and I haven't been allowed on the property.
So I'm going to give, uh, you know, Brad Will a chance to respond, but I want to say this, you got, there's 10 minutes to this case, 10 minutes. So Brad, if you want to respond to anything that's been said in the past, now's your chance to do it.
Um, well, what I'd like to do, Peter, if it's possible, is to just go straight into a a statement that was prepared by the applicant, the owners of the, of the property.
Okay.
I have the PowerPoint, Brad, if you want it at any point.
Perfect.
You, you can, you can put it right up there, Judy, and I can, I can let you know, you know, when, when you can advance the slideshow and that would be great. Thank you very much. Okay, so this shouldn't take more than a few minutes and I do appreciate the planning boards indulging us. I think, you know, what, what has been lost in this is the the owners themselves haven't had a chance to, to chime in and of course it is their property, it is their application and I am their representative. So I will read their statement and then enter it into the, into the record. Uh, this is the state, a statement from Mark and Harriet DeSwan Arons. Dear members of the Woodstock Planning Board, we are a family of five, including three kids aged, ages 17, 15 and 13. We have been Woodstock residents for over 16 years. Our household contains several environmental activists. And we are so in love with our new property, especially because of the mountains, views and its trees. Cutting down live trees is therefore a big no-no for us. When we bought our beautiful plot of land in August of 2020, there was already a private driveway, logging road, running all the way across the property from the start at Valley View Way to the two large clearings on the south facing ledge at the other end of the property. We are sharing video from the broker's site to show this condition prior to our purchase. Uh, Judy, if you want to click onto the next slideshow, slide, please.
I'm getting it to do it. So there we go.
There we go. So this is, it, it's only 24 seconds long or so. So I'll just let it run and then keep on with the statement. So you can see the, the plateau area. This is from the broker. Uh, so this is 20, this is, you know, filmed, you know, several months before the land was purchased by the DeSwan Arons. Okay. Uh, the, this road and the two clearings are also evident on the included Google map in the 2020 brokers listing video, which we just knew, and on photos that we took at that time. The property was strewn with hundreds of fallen and standing dead trees that made walking the land almost impossible and unsafe. In the fall of 2020, we commissioned a tree company to remove the fallen dead and standing dead trees from the parts of our land that we required access to. About two of the total 25 acres. As such, all the removed trees were dead trees. There is one minor exception. As you will note from the submitted SUP application, we are planning to place 45 ground mounted solar PV panels in an area farthest removed from the south ledge. Solar generation, our renewable energy provider, recommended that we remove three live trees from this area to maximize one light exposure and array performance. These three trees were removed in the fall of 2020. We are only mentioning this because these, and this is, we're emphasizing this, th- these were the only live trees felled. Three trees out of 25 acres. We need to stress again that we did not cut down any additional live trees. We did prune or top a layer of trees a little lower down on our property so that we can now see out into the valley above them. Over the last six months, almost all of the trees that were pruned have developed fresh green canopies at, at their tops. In January 2021, we were made aware by the town building department that a neighbor had complained to the New York City DEP alleging we were clearing trees. In response to this news, we met at the end of February 2021 with the Woodstock Building Department and the NYC DEP to review precisely what we were doing on the land and to assure them that no live trees were being cut. The DEP subsequently visited the property and was satisfied that we were not doing anything untoward. And we agreed on next steps, including the necessary process of applying for a septic field permit. We are happy to report that in August, we received the septic field approval permit to construct from the Ulster County DOH. Immediately upon being made aware of our neighbor's concerns, we also reached out to this neighbor to get to know him and understand his concerns. We have met with him three times, all very pleasantly, once on our land and twice on his land. We have shown him in person that no live trees, other than the three mentioned, had been cut. We pointed out the pruned treetops. And we most recently took him through the full SUP application supplemental drawings. On the visit to our land, the neighbor told us that he had re-watched the original brokers listing videos, which had convinced him that there were, there was indeed a road and two land clearances before we bought the land. But he said, he does not want to quote, "see our house." Even though we can see, also see his house quite clearly from our land if we stand at the ledge and look left, uh, which is roughly east, I believe. We do not believe that he has any rights in requesting that he will not see our house. That said, we have also tried to accommodate his concerns by adapting our design and moving our house as far back from the ledge as possible. With the result that his view of our house will be limited to our garden and perhaps a tiny bit of the side of our new house, which I will say is a one-story structure. We have also designed a house that will blend in completely with the natural surroundings, all with natural local stone and deep set glazing. We hope you agree that it will be quite beautiful and completely unnoticedable from afar. We hope that you will approve our building SUP application as we believe that we have followed all rules and regulations. And we will very much, we very much would like to start building our family home. We are committed to act as good neighbors and custodians of this beautiful land we now own. We hope we have your support. Thank you, Mark and Harriet DeSwan Arons. Um, so I'm sorry, Judy, you could maybe just um, scroll through. That shows, now, right in the middle, you see kind of a crescent shape. That's the logging road on the property. Um, that existed, you know, more than a year prior and for perhaps many years prior to the DeSwan Arons purchasing the property. And you could scroll. That, these are some aerial still, there's just some still shots from the, uh, the, the broker's listing. That shows the, the logging road from above and then now down below. Existing logging road. Clearing area. Uh, the house position, which will be on this plateau.
This is a what's the word? It's a mock-up, right?
This is, yeah, it's a rendering, correct. Yes. So this shows the stone cladding, the light, uh, you know, covered walkway from the, uh, the car park to the, to the front, to the entrance, which is on the backside essentially facing the, uh, uh, the rock ledge.
And these are existing trees.
Yeah, this is, again, it's a, it's a depiction. It's a rendering. So
Right.
It's not a photograph, but it's, it's, it's pretty accurate in terms of of how the trees are, are spread about. You know, obviously the trees where the house go have to be removed. So that's as with any house, new house construction. Next slide. So that's just another view. And that is the, the side that faces, um, I'd say southerly. Um, so it shows, it, it depicts the deep set windows that are very, you know, clean and, and, and large. So they're not, you know, just a whole bunch of small windows. I think it's a, you know, really a, 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 a pretty striking and beautiful design that the design architect, um, has developed and, uh, and it is set back as far as it can be considering that there is a rock ledge right behind the house. And I think, I believe this is the final, that's the final slide. So those were all, those, those slides uh, are something that you've had in your package as well. And, um, thank you for letting me
Thank you, Brad.
On Aaron's behalf.
Thank you, Brad. Let me answer the tree community, Michael, which is a question about us going on the site. The tree committee's purview is for in-town trees in the town only and along highways, not on private properties anywhere in town. So that's the answer to that question. The, as far as the
Peter, Peter, if I could just, uh, respond. Uh, the planning board has requested the tree committee to do site visits in the past. You have asked the tree committee to be, uh, you know, a part of this planning process for a number of years now. This is the first time since the tree committee has been involved with the planning board that we have been denied access to a site visit. And all I can say, Peter, is that the tree committee is feeling what, you know, if there is no problem up there, why is it that we can't just go up and have a look?
Well, I'll tell you what, Michael, please, please attend the December 16th meeting because
I plan to, I plan to. I'm just saying in terms of this particular case, I mean, now maybe these owners who bought the property did not cut the, you know, did not create the tree problem. Maybe it was the person who sold the land. I mean
Michael, we're going to discuss that on the 16th. Okay, we're going to discuss all these issues on the 16th.
But we're talking about this particular case right now. So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to interject here.
Okay, what, I know, I know you are, but we're running out of time.
Tree committee, be quiet. Okay, fine. Tree committee will stop talking. Okay, we won't have anything more to say about this because you don't want to hear it. Thank you, Peter.
This is Stuart. I just want to ask Mr. Beach one question, whether he asked the owners for their permission to go on the property and look at it.
I went through the planning board. I went through the planning board.
The owners, yes or no?
That's all.
I just want to know, have you asked the owners anytime?
I have not asked the owners, no. And I will, I will.
Question. Let's move on.
I'll ask them if you would like me to. I will. I mean, if you, if you're denying me
Move on. We only have a few minutes, sir. Uh, yeah. Sorry. Listen, as far as the resolution to this case goes, I'm addressing the planning board here. There's two conditions that we wanted to put on the resolution. One is that there be a silt fence installed along the bottom beneath where the pool area is going to prevent any, uh, you know, if it rains to prevent any, uh, silt running down the hill. And the other is to simply say that we want them to do minimal tree cutting and that is 26066G. So we are going to put in the resolution that they do the minimal tree cutting, 266G. Now, if anybody on the board, um, has anything else that you think we should, uh, address on this case before we go to a vote, please say so. Any board members have any other questions? As we have said in the, earlier in the public hearing, the other, when we had it before, that the applicant has done everything, Brad has done everything to comply with the scenic, with the scenic overlay code. Making a building as inconspicuous as possible, so to get back far off the bank and the cliff as possible. And so they've done everything they can. And as I keep saying, December 16th, we were going to have a meeting completely dedicated to issues in the scenic overlay so that we don't have these issues again. I don't want to get into it tonight. What was done up there is done. Um, and they've done everything they can to mitigate it. They've certainly designed a building, uh, to fit well into the setting. And, um, so unless anybody else on the planning board has a question.
Can the, can the public speak, Peter? It's a public hearing. I haven't heard any of the public speak.
Well, I'm running out of time. I, I got, I got a whole
May I speak for about 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
Okay. I agree with a lot. I appreciate Melissa sending my email to the planning board. I hope you take a moment to read it. Um, all I ask is that they do some mitigation that you asked for the SUP for some trees, not 30 foot today, but trees that are eight to 12.
Laura, we're asking for minimal tree cutting. That's the code, 26066G.
But, but you can improve, but you can improve the scenic overlay.
Laura, if there's needs to be changes, it's up to the town board to make changes in that code. The code is minimal.
You, 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 you have the, you have the purview to say trees ought to be here because it will help the scenic overlay. That's my opinion. You can disagree. Thank you for letting me speak.
It's true.
Um, respectfully, I'd like to just add a brief statement as well, if possible. With permission of the board, of course. Thank you. Uh, good evening, members of the planning board and Woodstock community. Uh, thank you for permitting me to speak. Um, I want to begin by saying that I understand that existing or alleged clearcut violations are not the purview of the board. I have no intention of belaboring that point. And I further understand that the Woodstock Building Department has visited the property 132 Valley View Way on at least two occasions.
We've heard this before. We've heard this before.
Respectfully, sir, you have not. I determined that no clearcutting violation existed at the property. Members of the board
There's no violations at all.
That is exactly what I'm getting to, sir. Um, I will, I will, I will abbreviate my statement. Uh, I submitted a free, a request under the New York Freedom of Information Law to the building department. They have no record of the site visit. They have no record of any measurements conducted at the site to be consistent with the fairly prescriptive definition of clearcutting that exists in the town code, uh, which I, you read last time. Um, and I just want to, I just wanted to make sure that both all the members of the board, as well as the public, were aware that the visits to the site conducted by the building department on at least two occasions, that the board has emphatically stated, uh, that, uh, the building department concluded that there were no violations. There do not appear to be any records of those visits. There were no measurements taken at the site. And I just think that that's something that
Here, here, I'm going to say this, I want to say this for the last time. Anybody in this town feels there's a violation of the code anywhere, you take it to the ZEO, not the planning board. You're taking it to the planning board. You have
I'm not
to the ZEO.
Respectfully, sir, I'm not taking it to the planning board. I'm just pointing out the fact that the planning board
The planning board has no power to, uh, to enforce anything.
Of course. It's the building department and the building department
You guys are barking up the wrong tree. You're barking up the wrong tree.
Respectfully, sir. The building department has no records of any assessments conducted at the site. That's all I'm saying.
Third time you've said that. What else do you have to say?
Just that I hope that at the December 16th meeting, the board will consider coordinating with the building department to ensure that in the future, perhaps these types of visits are documented. That's, that's all. Thank you for your time.
That's a reasonable request, Mr. Casta Donte.
This is Peter, can I ask a question, please? Uh, Brad, can you remind me how many trees were topped again?
I, I don't have a nu- a number of trees that were topped. I only know that the, uh, the tree, um, service, the, the, the arborist, the top several trees just below the building site. Um, and I think I addressed that in the letter from, uh, that, that Mark and Harriet DeSwan Arons submitted. And that they have grown, they have, uh, you know, since, uh, you know, grown some foliage back.
And that they were topped for what reason again, please?
It, to help them to, for use across the valley. I think that was stated clearly in the letter.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a short statement?
I think he went offline temporarily.
Yeah, I'm going to say, go ahead, Bennett, please.
Yeah, go ahead, Bennett.
Thank you very much. I, I would like to just specifically put aside the issues.
All right, Bennett, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but you are unintelligible. There's something going on that's scraping your mic or something like that.
Can you hear it? Can you hear it now?
Don't move any papers.
Thank you.
Can you hear it now?
No, you're fine.
Does that work? I want to specifically, uh, address 26, 260-66, which instructs the planning board as they consider special use permits. And I'm quoting from subsection A and I'm quoting parts special use permits. And I'm quoting from subsection A, and I'm quoting parts one and line D, which state specifically, "The proposed development shall include the following measures: the prohibition of development along and/or projecting above the ridgeline, and the discouragement of development at other visually prominent locations, so that the development is as visually inconspicuous as possible when seen from a distance and from lower altitudes." Behind me, we've all seen this photograph taken from a public roadway on Cooper Lake Road. That is Valley View Road. That is the Valley View property right there. It is highly visible from a distance and at a lower altitude. It is the purview of the planning board to deny this permit for that exact reason. It is a reason that is in the scenic overlay code, unless of course you believe that you cannot see this from a distance. Thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate your consideration and thank you very much for your service on the planning board.
I have a question. Is the owner present in this meeting?
No, Connor, the owner uh, is not present.
Uh, well, uh, the only thing I'm gonna put out there is, you know, we've asked, you know, I am someone who has encouraged, you know, the tree committee to come and be present at our site visits and essentially post-op as well. And I would like to either have a invitation extended or a, a, a clear reason submitted for why, in good faith, we cannot bring the people that we, you know, uh, rely on in these cases for expertise to look at this place. Now, I'm in, I'm completely in agreement with Bennett on this. It's very hard for me to see how I can vote for this when, you know, I mean, even if we look at the most, in my opinion, uh, surface interpretation of what it means to minimize tree cutting, for the, for the superficial uh, addition of a, a, of a view to get more out of it, that is to me, straight to the point. And maybe, and I don't think you have to read too deeply into it to find that. So I think it would go a long way to earning the uh, the confidence of the board that there are, that this is being taken seriously, to invite us and them up to, to take a look and to see what can and should, or can't be done.
So I just got a text. Uh, Peter lost internet at his house, our chairman.
Wonderful.
Is Stuart on?
Stuart's on.
Hi, Stuart.
Hey, how are you?
Um, you're gonna act as chair right now, okay?
All right, so um, we're still in the public hearing, are we not?
We are.
And uh, Judy, you had your hand up?
I do. I believe the law, I believe the law allows us to require mitigation. And I think we need to consider that.
All right, are there any other further comments uh, from the public on this application at this time?
Uh, I would, yeah, Brad will.
Go ahead, Mr. Will.
So I just wanted to respond to uh, to Connor's uh, comments. Uh, I think uh, the presentation and the, and especially the uh, the listing images show pretty clearly that there was a, a logging road and some clearing prior to the owners even purchasing this property. Um, and yet no objections were ever made or filed a- at any time before this application was submitted, when it was very clear that, that there was um, uh, a development afoot in the form of a logging road, uh, clearings of uh, of uh, a, a plateau with the dead trees that were standing and fallen. Um, and, and since then, uh, as Mark and Harriet have uh, I think uh, illustrated in their letter that, that their desire is to, is to keep it as treed as absolutely possible so that they can enjoy this and their family can enjoy this as their new place of living. So, you know, I, I, I think that seeing from afar is, it's going to be um, the, the impact is, i- it is, I believe negligible. So I just wanted to address Connor's comments. Thank you.
Uh, one last thing from the tree committee. We, we are more than uh, happy and offering to help uh, to advise on uh, possible mitigation solutions. Uh, we'll bring our experts in and, and we'll give you a report. We'd have to do a site visit unfortunately, but um, but we're, we're happy to help with the mitigation plan.
Right, thank you for your comment and your offer. Uh, Mr. Veach, I would just encourage you, if you, if you are serious about and looking at the site as you uh, display, I would encourage you to ask uh, Brad Will or the owners themselves for permission to meet them to go and look at the property. You haven't done that yet.
Ask Brad tonight. Brad.
You can do that, you can cheer, you can talk him about it, you can get some.
That's not up to me, Mr. Veach.
It's Veach, it's Veach, not Veach.
It's not up to me, Mr. Veach.
Okay, well, he just said to ask you, so I'm asking you, Brad, so, you know.
I'll leave that to you, gentlemen, and you can, Mr. Mr. Veach, you can follow up with Mr. Will, and that's that at this point. So um, um, James, Conrad?
Yeah, I just, um, I don't wanna take away from his points that what the planning board can and cannot do. Do, um, but I do wanna sort of echo more of what Connor is saying that I think the problem here is that, you know, whether you're, you know, topping or clearcutting or existing log roads or whatever, it's the scenic overlay that is obviously showing a physical violation. And it might not be a violation on paper, and it might be a violation that's in the technical wordings of things, but why do we have the scenic overlay? Why is it called that? It's because it's scenic and you can see this, and so it's a problem. And I think that the frustration here is it's fine to say we're gonna talk about this in December, but that doesn't do anything about this case. And I think that by trying to say something about this case is at least the right direction. And I just wanna say to the applicants that I feel like one of the reasons you want to live in this area and see all these beautiful mountains is because they aren't started up with cuts like this. And I think it's to protect that your own applicant that we are trying to make an issue of this to say, hey, we don't want to have twenty more of these for you, you know, in another year or two. That's gonna ruin your enjoyment of the area. So, you know, that's just all I wanted to say on that.
Of course, James, th- there's also a question, well, if, if you don't let them, if you don't give them permission to build, then how are they gonna enjoy their land?
I don't know what the conflict is when you say the scenic overlay can't be, you know, touched. And if you wanna buy up there, then you need to actually consider your house might not have a view out, you know, I don't know. It's, it's a lot to talk about in December, but I think when you walk in, the other problem is that this is Cooper Lake Road, which is one of the most like famous walkways in our town. And it's just like, I send people there all the time, and you clearly can see this. And so it's unfortunately, their view faces right onto this very public promenade for people to enjoy the mountains. And I, I mean, whether or not, you know, they are gonna go through and do all this, it's fine. But I think you, we do have to accept that there's gonna be pushback on this and people are gonna be upset. And then we have to, you know, gracefully acknowledge that and say, wow, how can we use this as a lesson to try to move forward?
Are there any other uh, comments? Judy?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing to Mike Veach, and that is we never have the authority to tell somebody they can go on someone else's land. The homeowner has to do that. That's simply not within our power. So you need to ask them.
Okay, Judy, I, I was never given their contact information. I, I was always.
Well, let's, let's not belabor that. You know who to speak to now. You can contact.
I'll contact them. I will. I will contact them directly and I will report back to the planning board, whatever.
I, I see several hands.
I think the question of mitigation is something we really need to keep alive.
All right, so John, John Laval, do you have a comment? Did you have your hand up? John, Laval, did you have your hand up? John, John's muted. I guess he didn't. Mr. Moncerey has his hand up.
Yes, can, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to invite all the members of the planning board up to Van Holgan Road and view out, look out in this direction, and you will see this gaping hole out there. And when these buildings, when these ten thousand square feet of, five buildings are built.
It's not ten thousand square feet. Mr. Moncerey, you've made that point multiple times. I think.
It's not ten thousand square feet.
Will you people please come up to Van Holgan Road and look out, please, and you'll see this. It's as plain as the nose on your faces. I implore you, I beg you, please come and see what this person has done is a gaping hole, and it's gonna be seen as well as from Cooper Lake Road.
Sir, those points have been made and, and they've been received. Uh, are there any other comments from the planning board? Any members have further comments?
Can you hear me, Stu?
Go ahead, Connor.
All right, I don't have a camera and I can't see.
Go ahead.
Raise your hand button. So ju- just to quickly touch on that, you know, uh, may, perhaps Mr. Veach would be willing to come to your property, Mr. Moncerey.
I have.
And to jump uh, off of uh, James's point, you know, this is something that we are really laboring over in the zoning revision committee, and it's something that is very tricky, uh, you know, to litigate because on the one hand, you know, we want to be able to be more prea- proactive, more preemptive in these cases. And while I don't understand, I, well, again, not to be secretive, but while I don't understand the resistance to allowing the tree committee to come and take a look at the property to help with the mitigation plan, you don't have to address that. It's just, I don't understand it from this point. I would encourage everyone to really, you know, anyone coming to that meeting to really ponder, look at the code as it exists now. While, while we can say confidently that the fines are not up to snuff, getting ahead of a problem like this can be really difficult. We can raise the fines, but the trees at that point are still gonna be cut down. So, you know, part of this is gonna be getting ahead and having a procedure that does involve everyone from the realtors to, say, tree companies in the area, anyone working in this area to know that you need some type of approval or some type.
Well, Connor, that's a, that's a good comment. Of course, that, that is the subject for the December meeting that Peter uh, mentioned at the, at the head of the meeting. So um, uh, that's where that will be taken up. Um, I would just make an observation that no matter how this board ultimately decides this application, uh, the cutting will still have, the effect of the cutting will still be there. And the hole that Mr. Moncerey's talking about, or the scar, whatever people wanna call it, will still be there. And the property will still be owned by these people. So, you know, we are not, we are not a punitive body. We're not a court. Um, we don't, we don't find people, we don't issue injunctions and so on. We're a planning body. And so, and this whole situation has been brought to us with a, a fait accompli in terms of the tr- the trimming of the tops of those trees that uh, has raised such an issue uh, in this matter. And, you know, frankly, I don't know how the board's gonna come out on this, and my own view is I think it, it, it may merit even further discussion amongst the board. Uh, but uh, that said, I, are there any other comments from the, from any board members? Hearing none. Are there any more comments that have not already been made from the public? Okay, hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Ratcliffe, did you have your hand up?
Yes, yes.
Okay, briefly, please.
I, I just wanted to, to respond that, that um, there is within the, the code uh, a, a provision for if, if, if you decide to deny a special use that, that they can, um, that they can follow as an applicant. And, and, and if you deny the special use permit, they certainly have all of the, all of the law available to do, to do just that. And in fact, at a public budget hearing, um, just, uh, just last two weeks ago, um, the town supervisor said that the legal fees were going to be increased in the town's budget in ca- in the cases that if this would happen, that, that people decide that they will pursue things legally. So I think that, that what it, it is saying is that you should deny the special use permit and let them follow through on the action if they, if they so decide to do so legally. I mean, I believe that is what the code was written for. Thank you.
Mr. Will, and then John.
I wanna emphasize that there were three live trees cut on this property, that the D E P has been there, that the, the Department of Health has approved a septic plan, that the applicant, the owners have done everything in their power to do this in the correct manner, and that no laws were violated whatsoever. So if you're gonna have a conversation about this starting in December, that's great. You should do that, and you should apply whatever the, the legislative results and policy results are from that meeting forward, not to this applicant who has done everything by the book and has been very respectful and, and has accommodated their neighbors and had them come up and look at it themselves and look at it from afar as well. So I, I think that I, I, I strongly vehemently disagree with Bennett's uh, uh, you know, saying, let's, let's, let's make this a legal problem for the, for the owners who are trying to build their house and are doing everything that, in the, the proper sequence to, with the planning board to have this application thoughtfully and, and comprehensively reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will and Mr. Laval. Yes. Start again.
Uh, I'd like to address what Bennett Ratcliffe just said. Until about two years ago, planning board could, if it had questions regarding any permission planning, call the planning board attorney, because we had money in our budget. It will be dealing with after the first of January. We no longer have the vision. The town supervisor decided to zero out our lines for any kind of legal assistance. And with the excuse that we could simply ask him describe the problem, and therefore then he would decide whether or not we could have that legal assistance. It is an additional bump in the road. Caused the planning board a lot of concern. So maybe you, as a board member on January one, can put the money back in our line and we could actually have the advice of a planning board attorney, one who specializes in these kind of issues, prior to us making a decision. It would be very welcome. Thank you.
I, I concur with that, as I'm sure the whole board does.
Absolutely.
All right, um, uh, I see that our chairman is uh, back online and that's a welcome return. Um, my inclination is to either bring this uh, public hearing to a close if there's a motion for that, or else to.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Hold on, or else um, turn the meeting back over to our chairman and let him decide whether he wants to entertain that motion or to recess the hearing uh, as he may decide to do. So I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to our chairman.
Peter, you're muted. You gotta unmute yourself.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you very much. We had a complete blackout up here. Um, yes, I would like to entertain a motion to uh, adopt the resolution.
Close the public hearing.
I mean, close, uh, doc, please, I'm sorry. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing first.
Already moved.
Okay, on favor?
Aye. That all the planning board members are aye?
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Asking that, Melissa?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Stuart said, uh, then I say we put this to a vote. So you wanna motion then to approve the, approve the uh, application? Is that it? I can make a motion and see if it gets seconded and see if there's any.
Please, Stuart, yeah, please.
Okay, so uh, this is a motion that the, the town of Woodstock Planning Board uh, approve the application made uh, by Mark and Harriet Deswan-Arns under S U P case number two one dash oh six six one. Uh, as applied for in this matter. It's a motion to approve the application. Here in a second. Is there a second? Hello? Am I muted again or something?
No, they hear you.
Do you wanna pull the board? Yes, I wanna hear a second on the motion, right? There seems to be no second. All right, let's, let's pull the board because we're not gonna keep the public meeting open.
No, I thought we.
Either vote, either vote, either vote yes or no, but vote. Well, we've, hold on, we've.
Point of order.
Are we closing the hearing or are we having?
Judy, we closed the hearing. That's been done.
Most.
That's what I thought.
Again, so the motion on the floor is to have the planning board approve the, uh, application in this matter as, as submitted, as applied for, of course, subject to a more formal resolution. But that's the motion and, and the question from the chair was, is there a second? Is there a second on the motion? I'll second it. Well, that's a second.
Discussion.
I think they're entitled to discussion under the, uh, traditional rules. Not sure what's there to discuss.
I will not vote in favor unless there is clear language for mitigation.
The language is that they can.
Did you read the resolution? Judy, did you read the resolution that's drafted? The two items that Peter said that were the mitigation are listed in the resolution.
We're not voting on the resolution.
I know.
We're voting.
Okay.
We're voting. Voting to, we're voting to approve the application subject to a more formal resolution.
Oh.
Okay, so answer Judy's question. Number one, there's no mitigation because there's no violation. There, there has to be a violation submitted by the town, by the building department. And then they would ask for a mitigation. The second point to your question, Judy, is that what we're putting in there is that they minimize tree cutting. That's what the code says. Can't say more than the code says.
It also says mitigate visual impact.
Well, they are, that's, they, they, they moved the building back from the ledge. They have, it's all stone faced. They're leaving the trees that are there in front. Stuart and I took a look, there's a whole wall of trees right in front that blocked the, blocked the building. And I, you know, what else can you possibly do?
You can plant additional trees.
Well, not going down that road because, um, we know how that works out. I mean, I'll be quite frank to you, I mean, that's what Laura Ricky brought up. You can ask them to plant 100 trees. We have cases coming before us that are totally clear cut. Who's going to watch, monitor and take care of those trees to the 30 foot tall? The planning board, the building department? Who's going to take care of those trees? Who's going to be in charge of that? Who wants to volunteer to watch those trees grow for the next 30 years? I mean, it's. What has to happen is the town board has to, we're going to have a meeting on December 16th to discuss this entire issue. And the town board has to change the code if that's the problem with it. We can only do what the code says. The code says minimum tree cutting. That's what it says. To me, I was up at that site, I've been on many sites, it's very minimal to put a house in there. Now, you can deny a landowner the right to build a house. And I, we're going to have some cases coming up that are really hard. This is an easy one. We've got cases where they've already clear cut acres in front of their house. It's already clear cut. And, you know, the Montserrat is one of those cases which is coming up before us.
So are we at the point now where we're voting either yes or no? Or is there more discussion?
Call the question.
Well, we're way over our time. We have a lot of ground to cover. So I, I think it's a very simple question for the board, either vote yes or no? Again, the motion is to approve the application, uh, and it's submitted and subject to adoption of a more formal resolution. And as the board knows in those resolutions, uh, we sometimes insert conditions that, uh, are needed. So, but at this point, the motion is to approve the application, uh, subject to a more formal resolution. Okay. That's the motion. You seconded it, Peter, so. I get it. Do you want to call a vote? I'll call a vote, let's have a vote.
I vote no.
Well.
Aye.
First of all, why don't you pull the board and see what? That's my suggestion, Peter. If you could have Melissa go down each board member and record the vote.
Okay.
Peter. Peter.
Yes.
Stuart.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
What was that?
Nay.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked, I thought it was a, thanks Stuart. Judith.
Yes.
Connor.
Nay.
Brian.
No.
And James.
No.
Also, it's four nays, right, Melissa? And three yeses?
Yes.
So the motion does not carry, is that right?
That's right.
Motion fails.
So do we recess again pending further conversation among the board?
Who's asking?
I'm asking.
Well, just like what's going to happen with the rest of these scenic overlay cases, they're going to get denied and they're going to go to the Z V A and it's going to be up to them. We just kicked it down the road to the Z V A. Well, the, the planning board has just spoken unless, uh, there's a motion to reconsider. I don't, I haven't heard one and I'm not suggesting it. John, you, John had his hand up, but Peter wants to recognize it.
Hi, John, yeah, go ahead, John.
There, there was a process somehow in, with the committee that both Peter and Judith are part of to look at way in which we deal with these things. I think the reason I voted nay is because the way in which we deal with these things is defective. And we have not had good advice. We've attempted to do so and been denied. And for one, I'm very, very concerned about where we're going. The need to have a broad look at what we're doing when it comes to scenic overlay and to some degree floodway. And to establish some sort of policy that would be incorporated and hopefully made into law by the town board so that we would be able to enforce something that made sense.
Yes.
I agree. That's the issue. This case came before us before we've considered the issues in the scenic overlay. This case was before us, it's been site inspected, it's gone through the whole, uh, inspection of the, of the board. But I agree, the system is flawed. And I totally agree that we really have to look at every case in the scenic overlay with a different set of guidelines for the future. I absolutely agree. I just don't think you can stop this applicant midstream until you come together with a concerted way of doing things. Because we're saying no because of mitigation, but who, as I said before, when you talk about mitigation with trees? Well, they got the tree guy right there, ask them, how hard is it going to be to plant 100 trees and make sure they all grow up here in the mountain? And who's going to watch it and who's going to maintain it? That's irresponsible. That's a discussion for another day. We have, uh, two other cases that we have to get to them. That's what I said. Okay, let's move on. Melissa, is there something you would add to the, uh, procedure here as to how to, with this case?
I don't know, this is the first time we've ever done this.
All right, well, as I was going to say, we kicked it to the Z V A. The applicants. And, and the town board. You know, the town board's going to have to deal with it. I'm sorry, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, to help the, the planning board out here, uh, and, uh, it, you know, I, I think that there was no, uh, um, blockade of any sort. Um, we didn't ask that the, the, the tree committee not go up. It was just not requested by the planning board. And we also demonstrated that a lot of this work was done back when the logging road went in. There was a, there was a, a, a gash or whatever, however you want to call it, well before the owners purchased this property. So I think, um, this is a rash. I, I, I'm just going to speak frankly, I think this is a rash vote on, on this. Uh, we went through all the, the right moves to get to this place. Uh, the owners, uh, this is a privately owned piece of land. Uh, they bought, uh, an existing condition here. Um, so I, I'm putting myself out there to help the planning board in any way possible to, uh, reconsider this. I know a vote's been taken, but there is language that could be put in a resolution. I'm aware of that, I've done that on other boards and, and city councils. So, uh, let's, let's take a, 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 a little more open look at this and, and realize that there were existing, pre-existing conditions here that were never, no one ever said anything about. And, uh, so I think that, I think that the, uh, the owner's being treated unfairly here. So I'm putting myself out there to help out.
Thank you, Brad, I, I certainly agree with you. Um, the, I think the town is setting themselves up for an Article 78, but, uh, you know.
Now that you mention it.
No, I think that's what they set themselves up for. You know, minimal tree cutting, that's what it says, minimal. That's what we asked, that's what I saw, and that's what we're putting in the resolution, or would like to put in the resolution.
I'd like to just. Just say that, um, you know, all of this now, we have the opportunity to discuss at our December meeting. I, you know.
That's what I said, Connor. I said at the beginning of this meeting, December 16th was for this discussion, not now.
And you're completely right. And with that in mind, I think I'm just going to posit, let's move on firmly from here. Pick it up as we go and yes, and let's put Brad and Mr. Veatch in touch. And, you know, I'm going to, I'll put myself out there and say that I'll be willing to reconsider when we see more forward momentum and after we've had that discussion. So I'm saying let's move on right now.
I, I agree. I'm also going to suggest that the planning board does not accept any more applications in the scenic overlay until we have this solved.
I think that's an idea.
Good idea.
John's got his hand up. John?
Love the idea, Peter, this is festering for decades. It probably has.
Yes, I know.
It, well, at this point, it's been brought to a head and that's what's occurred. And Brad's shaking his head.
You bet I am.
Yeah, I'm sorry that you happen to be the case that this falls on. I'm sorry for you and your applicants, but this has been festering and it's just.
Not an applicant.
It comes to a head, that's it. The town has got to rectify the situation and it requires more than a planning board with zero enforcement capability.
And zero lawyer.
And zero lawyer.
Go after the clear cutters.
Well, that's, that's coming up, you wait. The next cases we have are in so violation that you can't believe it. But anyway, I, we got to move on, we got to move on. So. Let's turn it back here. Okay, next is the review of the M D R A memorandum and the Ulster County Planning Board referral response to the Fam Acres LLC Planning Board Case 21-1226. And this is a review of a subdivision application of 147 acre lot into 13 parcels of plus or minus 10 acre lots in the R3 zoning district located at 1883 Glasgow Turnpike in Woodstock. And Melissa Merrimack and Bockett Eggers are the reps. But right now it is up to, um, uh, memorandum from Matt to tell the board what, uh, has changed on this application.
You're muted.
Matt?
You're muted.
I have to unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone.
There you go.
So, uh, we have a memo on this and, um, we've gotten some feedback from the applicant on a, a couple of the items. And I just wanted to, to put everything in perspective, you know, this is a, a, a substantial parcel, 147 acres. But it's 147 acres that, you know, has been identified in the, um, Hudsonia, uh, habitat assessment. And it's just, just to put in the context of the rest of our comments, uh, it's, you know, a part of a thousand acre complex that, you know, that's, um, a forest complex. And there's, you know, patches of rich diversity and wildlife and intermittent wetland pools and wetlands and, and ridges and, and various habitat, uh, that are identified and various species that are likely to, uh, be inhabiting this habitat. And just, just to point out, this is not to say that what's being proposed can't be done. So this should not be misinterpreted. But these factors are some, are the context in which some of the review questions need to sort of be addressed. And, and again, it's not to stop the project from happening. It's just out to make sure that appropriate, uh, considerations were done in the design to minimize impacts. And then for those impacts that do occur, that there be, um, uh, an accurate statement of the, of the, of the, uh, amount of those impacts. And then, you know, some reasonable, uh, mitigation measures. So, you know, with that, I think the first thing I have to deal with is, so this is still 12 residential units, correct? I mean, I, I, that's from our memo, that's our sense of it. And that makes it a type one action under seeker, under tweaker, excuse me, under tweaker. And so what that means is that we have to go through a coordinated seeker review, um, which means that for each of the involved agencies, they have to receive a, a, a communication from the planning board saying that they've received the application, what the application is for, uh, that, uh, they are proposing that they be the lead agency and that the, each of the other agencies is given an opportunity to concur that the planning board should be the lead agency. And that's a coordinated review. That's been discussed in our workshops and things and doesn't slow down the project, but it does, but it is this first step. And what gets sent out is largely done. So it isn't that we're sending the applicant off to, to do more things. However, there are some things in this memo that we think should be done before it's circulated. Um, and that, that's primarily in the, um, uh, a couple of the identification aspects of some of the features on the site and some, and some questions in the E A F. Because that's the point of it, is that the, the involved agencies are going to be getting this package and they want to see what's involved in the project and see an accurate description of it in, in the E A F. So is the board in agreement with that? Is there any discussion about that point? Or should as a result of this discussion, I be authorized to, um, when we receive updated, uh, information based on this memo, that we would prepare a circulation for lead agency? And is there any question about that at this point?
Um, Matt, I think Judy has some further information on that site, is that not true?
I do, I have some maps I prepared and I think they are instructive about the sensitivity and of the area. If you permit me, I will bring them up and show them.
Well, that's, that's, that's fine to do, Judith, as a matter of discussion. But it's really more important in a way, not more important, but it's equally as important just for the applicant to access these maps and, and pull something out of, uh, these maps in terms of the data and incorporate that into, into some of the environmental assessment material that they're asking the board to use to base their decision on. So please proceed with, with those maps.
Okay, oh, wait a minute, I got to get the, I got to get the, um, the screen share again. Okay, this is kind of a, a blank slate. What you see here is the property. On this side, there is someone else's forest, uh, what's it called?
Stand?
No, it's, um, forest tax law property. On this side, there is a conservation easement. This is the property. So I'm going to turn on layers that show what is going on on this property. First of all, as Hudsonia observed, crest, ledge and talus, that is the gray lines. That is an area where things like reptiles live. And it is right next to large areas of, well, not large areas of ridge, but areas of ridge. And what I have done is identified the areas that are greater than 15% slope. I've just conglomerated them. So anything that's less than 15% is not seen, you're just seeing 15 and higher percent slope. Then we get to high farmland of statewide importance. So this little corner over here is considered farmland of statewide importance. It's not being farmed right now. Then we have a problem with poorly and very poorly drained. Then we have a problem with somewhat poorly drained. Now, habitat core rank was mentioned by the county. And this is the habitat core rank layer. As you can see, it is in what they call the general category, which is less than medium, high, very high, but it is still up to. I'm going to turn it off just because it covers up so much stuff. Then we have a whole large area where I, rare animals have been identified. That whole gridded area up here is rare animals according to our natural resources inventory. I don't have details. I am not going to turn on the Hudsonia complex because it's always wider than our buffers. But here are the wetlands. That's the dark green. And here is the 100 foot Woodstock buffer. This is in the law. Here is the stream. And that should have a buffer around it. Hudsonia puts one on, but it's bigger, so I'm not turning it on right now. Some of the wetlands are New York, that's what I just turned on. Some of the wetlands are New York. That's what I just turned on. Remember, we're just talking about inside that black line. Intermittent woodland conservation pools, I'm not gonna turn on the, the zone because it's very large, but these little yellow dots are intermittent pools. And of course, they're right in the middle of wetlands, so that's obvious. The forest core is that black area, which is very large, as you can see, the, the black grid lines. So I've done this in the form that I have to show that when you put it all together, this is a supremely complex area of ecological concern. And I could take questions if there are any, or I can turn off the map.
Very good, Matt.
Thank you, Judith. That, that was, you know, it's interesting because, you know, I made that introduction just so that the board would see our comments in that context. But it's true, this is a complex site, but, you know, the engineering that's been done is, is, is substantially and responds to those issues. And our memo is not saying that this number of lots can't be done. If there are certain measures that can be taken that would give the board some comfort, that that, that a reasonable amount of protection is being employed in the planning for the project. And so I appreciate that because it really does sort of set the tone for, for, for where we are. Um, but, you know, when you read through our comments, our comments are based upon the fact that doing these various things, the board, if it so seems fit, can, 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 can see a plan that does comply, even with those rich resources. And ideally, those rich resources are being avoided to the maximum extent, being mitigated to the extent that they are impacted, will enrich the, the site, will, will really, you know, make this large enough, not large, but these, these twelve homes fit into their natural circumstance, as well as can be expected and in compliance with the law. And so that's sort of the tact that, that we're taking in that it is a, a, a delicate site. And so I, I appreciate that, but what I'd like to do is I've highlighted in my own version of the memo, a couple of the key points uh, that, that the applicant needs to sort of consider in, in what we think needs to be an exhibition. But we also think that, um, uh, that we want, that we were recommending that the, um, that the, uh, the planning board engineer, uh, take, take a look at this plan and, uh, and that we also, there's a question that we think may have to go to the town attorney, um, that, um, I, that had appeared in our prior memo. So there may be the need for those two other aspects of, of involvement. But if, but if I could, you know, I would like to just sort of, sort of set the tone a little bit. Because some of the project narrative is, uh, supportive, uh, that, you know, for example, the, in item number, uh, in my item number two, on page two, uh, there's in the narrative, there's discussion about no disturbance on lands of greater than fifteen percent slope. Well, that's fine, but what we're saying is since this slope is not just a one incidental thing, it's part of a whole complex of, of things that are happening on the site, we want to see some protection there. And what we don't see is any development restrictions for lot owners. So lot owners, you know, can go there and, you know, do what they want regardless of the, of, of the slopes. And so some kinds of protections in this area and in a number of other areas, we're sort of, um, suggesting that, 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 that would be the case. Like, so even for the rock walls, you know, with the next second bullet, you know, there's, that's good. They're not gonna, the, the project's been designed to relocate disturbed rock walls. Um, but then again, that, that requirement doesn't really carry forward, uh, in, in terms of, um, uh, in terms of property owners. And that's something that the Ulster County Planning Department commented on as well. So now we get into the specifics of the wetlands only because that's a particular area and a, and a particular set of regulations associated with it. And the thing that Judith brought up about the, the, the kinds of species is that the, the environmental work, the, the habitat work that was done by the applicant wasn't real, was not a habitat assessment. It was, uh, uh, an assessment of the wetland, you know, delineation of the wetland, and was sort of, the only real set habitat assessment was for the Indiana backs. It did mention, um, uh, some of the other species identified by the state, but it was not a, a, a look at the various habitats and the various types of wildlife that utilize these habitats, that, 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 you know, grow and, and survive in these habitats. And that's the point is that, you know, an individual habitat, whether it's protected or not, you know, can be avoided, but when you start adding them up and putting them together, they start to, you know, contribute to or detract from this complex of all these varied environmental resources. So we really feel that there should be a more full habitat assessment, and, and, and we'll get into that, uh, again, um, as, as I continue on. But the next main point we're making is that regarding the main driveway. And then, and the main driveway, what we say substantially fragments the site, separating wetlands, um, to be assessed for potential mitigation. Well, you know, again, those kinds of things can occur, but what kinds of things can be done to minimize that, that degree of separation? And we think those should be identified on the plan if the applicant is willing to. Uh, um, we think that there should be speed signs, slow speed sign, there might be speed bumps, there should be low-profile curves, there should be potentially um, tunnels in, in one or two key places. But those would be evident mitigations, which the applicant say, okay, yeah, we, we, we have the right to develop these lots. We're going, we're cutting the wetland here because it's reasonable to do, it's, it's only buffer, and we're proposing these measures. Then the, the planning board has some further basis to make this decision on. And so if you continue on, um, uh, we were indicating, for example, another mitigation they propose is that there'd be a four-foot-high witness posts placed along the bounds of the regulated wetlands. Well, two things on that. One, um, uh, we, uh, they, they don't seem, on the plans we saw, they, they didn't seem evident to us in terms of where they were located. But more importantly than that, obviously, if you want to see them, but more importantly than that is really, these, these posts should be at the hundred-foot buffer, not at the wetland edge. Because the wetland buffer is almost as protected as the wetland edge and certainly is as regulated as the wetland edge. So that would really be expanding the areas of, of those, um, where those, um, posts would be. Something that should be seen on the plan, uh, you know, it's sort of putting their money where their mouth is. You're getting more aggressive about asserting that not only are you gonna do these mitigation measures, but you're gonna make the landowners know that they're in, 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 in environmentally a very, very rich location, and there're gonna be some restrictions on what they can do. You know, and, and there may be development envelopes proposed, but that, 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 we're not saying that specifically. Um, but clearly, uh, with regard to, uh, those measures, there's, so those are already a start of a wetland impact mitigation plan. But that should be more robust, you know, in compliance with the section of the wetlands law, which is, which is quoted in, uh, in, in our memo, section two sixty-three-four H two. So that's really, you know, um, um, uh, so a little bit more on the wetland. The, the section number four, paragraph number four on, on page three, that's what I read from that description of what the thousand acres is, which, which really is sort of an articulation of the maps that, uh, uh, Judith ju- just showed us. And this, this, so this paragraph really talks about some of the resources that really need to be assessed in the habitat assessment that we already mentioned as we feel, uh, needs to be done. Uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go on too long, but, but, um, the section of the five, that lists the changes that we think should be in the F E A F, and those changes are changes we want to see um, uh, in the F, in an F E A F that gets circulated as part of a coordinated environmental review. And so, um, uh, these are sort of self-explanatory, just reference to the town law concerning the open development area, uh, which is, uh, my first bullet, question B, uh, uh, small letter A. And that's a discussion we've had with the applicant. And the reason, uh, for that is that, you know, we, it has to do with this, um, this is a thing that we feel should be referred to, to, uh, to the, um, town attorney. And of course, regarding, uh, uh, costs, uh, you know, uh, uh, a, um, uh, an involvement by the town attorney and some, excuse me, by the planning board attorney and something like this, I would think would be subject to the same escrow provisions that the other consultants are, are being, um, um, a lot, uh, permitted, funded by. Uh, but this is a case where, is the applicant's attorney on the call?
We do have an attorney here, and, uh, he, he did address the two eighty A, uh, provision. And he could talk about that now if you'd like. It's Alex.
Right, but what I just wanted to say before Alex spoke was, Alex and I had, had a conversation and some emails about this, and and Will Agresta from the office provided a, a little more detail of our thinking on, on why we had this question. And Alex was sort of in agreement that there is a question here, and it's, uh, and so he'll, he'll describe that. But he also concurred in what we had told him that we were gonna recommend to the board be that this gets referred to the town attorney, and he sort of agreed with that. So Alex, why don't you explain your take on this? But it has to do with the, um, with when an open development area is required. And, um, and, and then, uh, so Alex, why don't you go with that?
All right, sure, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Rudikoff. So we are definitely in full support, uh, with conversing about the town attorney about this. Um, but just to explain, I guess, quickly, our position. We qualify and don't need a two eighty A variance from our perspective because we are showing a road on a filed sub, or on a plat that will be filed in the county clerk's office. Therefore, we meet the requirement of two eighty A so that nothing further is, is required. And the issue was around the terminology of calling it a right-of-way. Uh, it's labeled on the subdivision plat as a right-of-way in a private road. But then there's a subsequent section in two eighty A that references if you're gaining access by right-of-way, then you need uh, in development area approval from the town board. Um, so there's, it's just used in two provisions, but our position is, is that the difference is that we're showing it on a filed plat, therefore we meet the first requirement of two eighty A and don't need that subsequent open development area approval.
Right, and, and our, and our point was just a technicality, which is that, um, uh, the road that, uh, that connects to the main road i- isn't, it's a private road. It's not, it's not a, a deeded road. And so what we're thinking was if this, if that section of road could be made a, uh, its own lot, uh, and there was a, a home of association that was obligated to, to maintain that, that might be something that would have, uh, uh, be a determining factor. And so that's, I think, if the board is in agreement, we could refer that to John Lyon and, and have, um, and get you a good answer. It, it doesn't affect the, the project getting done or not. It's just this, this technicality associated with, uh, with this element of the approval. So, um, i- in one of our E A F questions, you know, so I don't have to go through them all, but it had to do with the stormwater prevention, prevention plan, had to do with, um, uh, described the regulated activity, uh, due to that activity. Um, the question about propane storage wasn't adequate. There's a, uh, uh, on question E one B, uh, there's, uh, uh, four-point-five acres of, of cleared forest, and, and it doesn't seem to be really be accounted for in terms of why it was necessary or why that's being done. But that's again, just in the F A F. It's not, not us raising that as, as a problem. It just feels it, it needs to be further, further described. Um, some questions about soils, and then also comment, comment about the restriction on tree cutting uh, regarding, uh, the Indiana back. So just that, but those variations in the E A F are things that we want to see done before. The E A F is circulated to the lead agencies with, with whichever more of these site plan or, or, um, uh, habitat assessment kinds of materials are, are deemed to be necessary to circulate. For example, the habitat assessment, that really doesn't have to be done before it gets circulated to the lead agency. All that has to be done indicated is that, you know, there's a, a question that we say yes regarding the potential presence, and that we indicate that it's being done. Um, certainly, we believe that this thing would be circulated to D E C as one of the involved agencies because of their involvement with the SWIP. Um, so D E C is gonna see it, so they may certainly, uh, have questions about it because D E C does respond to lead agency circulation requests. And, uh, if there are no, if there are no natural resource issues, sometimes they don't comment on the natural resource issue. So if it's going to them just for stormwater, sometimes they don't, but sometimes they do. And so it's very helpful to the board to get D E C's comments on some of the natural resource issues because then you know, you know, what their concerns are, and you know how to incorporate that into your own review and your own wetland permit review. So those are things that, that we'll, uh, uh, deal with. Um, uh, I think the rest of the items in this, in this subdivision are really sort of, um, self-explanatory in terms of the applicant responding. And, um, and regarding the county's comments, you know, they're saying that, uh, the Department of Health has to approve it, and D P W has to approve it. They want to see some comment, comments on the sustainable energy code. Uh, obviously, they want to see the stormwater plan. Uh, they made a comment with the line of evergreens, sort of, um, uh, not blocking the views. But at this point, I think it's really more for the board to sort of say to the applicant, yes, respond to these comments, yes, prepare, revise the F A F, and get Matt a set of plans that we can use for the lead agency distribution, get that circulated. And then we'll have a new set of plans, and then, and then the board at its next meeting can confirm lead agency, make a next, next set of comments if necessary and, and continue to move forward. But certainly, we need to hear the board's approach regarding the issues that Judith raised and the comments that we made.
Yeah, could, may, may I, um, can I speak now?
Sure, Barry.
So, um, I, I, I agree with, you know, almost everything Matt's saying. Um, you know, his, his letter is very detailed, and, uh, we went through it, and, um, there's, you know, maybe one or two items I'd like to discuss further with him, but otherwise, all of these, all this information, everything you've put down here, we're doing. I, I just want to point out, you know, where we are with the project is, um, you know, we had, uh, you know, as Judy pointed out, you know, you had all these environmental issues. That's the first thing I noticed when we first looked at the land, and that was the first thing, you know, we spent quite a bit of time before we even came to the planning board, you know, studying the property and having the wetlands delineate mapped out. And we had our biologists out there. And, and the, uh, the, the bio, the, the only habitat report we had him do at this point was just endangered and threatened species. Um, so that's what really, well, his goal was out there, in addition to just identifying where these wetland boundaries are. And, and of course, we put a hundred-foot buffer on it, and, and that is where we would put the marks at the hundred-foot buffer. We never intended to put them at the wetland. Um, and, you know, put a substantial amount of this property into a conservation easement. And I know, um, Matt, you know, saying, well, we need to have detail then, and I agree, all that detail needs to come. And I think all of these things that he's bringing here is really, uh, what's essential to, to, you know, before we get preliminary approval and maybe a couple of them in final approval. But I, I feel, uh, where we still are, are is, um, you know, what I submitted is a sketch plan. And your, your regulation, uh, section I got in front of me here, two oh-two dash fifteen, sketch plan review and classification. And, um, I was looking to get the board to just comment on that, where the provision of that regulation asks you to identify it, which, you know, is a major subdivision as opposed to a minor, which I think is pretty obvious, and also identify the road requirements we have, uh, our main road clearly needs to be a major road under your definition. We have every intention of building that. And the two little side roads we have that we're calling common driveways would need to be classified as minor roads. Um, and then just, um, in that regulation, you know, it says that the planning board, you know, should just basically give an opinion that we are following the proper procedures and moving in the right direction. So I was just looking, uh, for a little more feedback from the planning board, um, before we really dig into a lot of the details that are in the preliminary plot. Um, you know, but at the same time, I will tell you, we've been out there at the site. We're doing more studies. We've been digging test holes. We've had the health department out there to log in soils. You know, we're collecting a whole lot of data to be able to identify all the septic sites. Um, and we've had some more road work. We're waiting for the county to come back out. They've been out to the site already and approved the entrance. I'm, now that I have more formal plans, I'm gonna look for something more formal from them in writing. Um, so all this stuff is in progress. We're working ahead on it. And, um, I know Matt said, uh, you know, that the one thing the planning board could do is declare themselves lead agency and ask for coordinated review from the other agencies. And we support that. We would like to get that going too. So that is something that, um, definitely should be, um, you know, we would hope the board maybe could even do tonight.
I just wanted to check one thing with what Barry was saying, because that, that I agree with. Because Barry was saying, you know, we have this, this, this sketch plan in, and, and looking for something from the board. And in effect, if the board were to accept the F, the revised F A F and a slightly revised set of plans at this, or still early stage, and declare lead agency and have them circulated, that's sort of like taking an action.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I agree, Barry. Um, so, um, Melissa, what we're gonna do is set up a meeting so the planning board can discuss this. This is a very big project, obviously, the biggest subdivision we've done in a long time. But we happen to be way behind schedule on our meeting tonight. So I don't think we can get into it any further, Barry, tonight, but we will ask Melissa to set up as soon as she can. Let's get a time for the planning board to, uh, further review this.
Uh, Peter, may I just ask one thing? Would that, would that include not, um, adopting, not, not declaring yourselves lead agency and just voting yes, we're lead agency and?
Oh, I'm sure that the, um, I don't speak for the board, but I'm sure the board would uh, vote to be the lead agency. We can do that now if you want, but.
Yes. You can declare your intent to be lead agency and authorize that a circulation package be prepared, which will be the revised D A F. package, uh, be prepared, which will be the revised DAF and the plans revised to some extent on, based on some of our comments. And then we would circulate that for lead agency. And then you schedule your next meeting and you, you'll already be moving in the direction of lead agency.
Stuart, you had your hand up?
Yeah, go, John. John has his hand up.
So far, my, one of my big concerns here regarding this project, having driven this part of Glasgow Turnpike for many, many years, is the way traffic comes down Glasgow from Gl- from, excuse me, from Woodstock heading to Sogans. And the fact that you have that curve, which kind of blinds that particular, what would be exit. And I know, Barry, that you said that there was, that the county came out and said everything was okay. Um, I think a traffic study certainly would be in order because of the what the, well, first of all, the speed at which the cars come from Woodstock heading to Sogans. The fact that your people or whoever is living there would be coming onto Glasgow Turnpike from a dead stop. And they're going slowly. Um, I think there's tremendous potential there for some disastrous accidents. So I, I just, I would really like to see some attention paid to the traffic study.
Yeah. Uh, John, um, I know we had a site inspection. I don't remember if, were you out there when we had the site inspection?
No.
Okay. Because if you, if you look, if you go out to the Glasgow Turnpike and you look at right where we're putting the entrance, you'll see we have excellent sight lines in both directions there. It's quite away from the, from the two curves. And that's why we're putting it in that location, um, specifically. And that's why we need to, um,
Is it our?
Yes, it is. It's flagged. Yep. And I'd be happy to meet anybody out there at any time to, you know, show them.
Just prior to Mrs. Josephson's home. Or former home.
Um, I'm not sure who's home, but the existing house on the property.
He owned the entire property.
Okay. Well, the house that's there on the property, this would be just to the east of it.
Yes.
Um, there's a, there's a stream crossing there and it'd be up, you know, be between the house and a stream crossing, basically. And there, there is a flag there. I don't know how well you can see it from Glasgow, but the road is marked and flagged when you're on the property. And, um, and, and, uh, there's a stone, there's a stone wall there that, um, that runs through and we're going to move part of that stone wall because, uh, the, the road's kind of like, going to cut right through it. And we're going to put it up on the house site. And that's all detailed on the plans that we've submitted to date. But, um, you know, I think I'd be happy to, you know, if any member wants to go back out there and specifically look at that.
I certainly will take a look at the plans. Yeah.
Judy has her hand up. Judy?
Yeah, I have some conversation I wanted to have with Barry, but this may not be the night for it about the conservation easement and the fact that so many of the properties go across wetlands and are, and, and parts of them are inaccessible without crossing wetlands.
Right.
I don't know if this is the right time to do that because.
I think we'll schedule, Judy, I think we're going to schedule another meeting so that the planning board can go over these issues. And, uh, so Melissa will set, uh, Stuart?
It's just a small clerical point. I just want to ask Melissa, do you get, um, Alec Ladd's, do you know, when the attorney Alec Ladd was talking, did you get his firm name and who he's representing?
I have it in my emails. Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure you have it. Thank you. That's all.
All right, Barry and Matt, thank you so much for, uh, bringing all this information to us. It's a major subdivision. So we're gonna.
So is the bo- is the board going to formally declare themselves lead agency and, and authorize Melissa to circulate it?
Stuart, what's your position on that?
I, I would go along with Matt's suggestion on that. I think, uh, we should be.
Okay.
I would move the board, uh, declare itself an agency on this project and authorize circulation of the package.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Just hang on. I thought Matt suggested a few things before we did that though. I'm confused now.
Y- y- yeah, he wants me to update the EAF, uh, with the comments he has in his letter. And I'll be happy to get that to you right away.
Matt, you're muted.
So I can't do anything until we have what I'm submitting.
Yeah, I will. I can stick that to you.
That's not on you. I'm just, so the planning board is aware.
Okay. We have to write a cover letter. We have to write a cover letter and we have to write a determina- you know, declaration of intend to be lead agency. So there's a few things I'll talk to you about Melissa about putting this package together once we get the revised materials from the applicant.
All right. Cause we have to notify, uh, they're interested. Uh, I don't remember what the phrase is, but there's other entities that we have to notify, involved agencies. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'll work with you on that.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know most of it, but thank you, Matt. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. And thanks, Barry.
Hey, very much.
Sorry, we're running so far behind, but, uh, we have a sketch plan review, seven twenty, it was supposed to go on a seven twenty-five, Town of Woodstock and Crown Castle. New Singular PCS LLC, SPR and SUP, if I can read this here, to be, oh, to be determined. Review of special use permit, application, application for eligible facilities request and plans for modifications to site to remove four antennas, installing two new, removing four TMAs, two duplexes, nine radio units and installing eight new radio units, replacing two existing DC trunks and reinforcing existing mounts on existing cell tower located in the R8 zoning district at one two two California Corey Road in Woodstock. And the rep is Brenda Blask Lewis, site acquisition consultant. So, um, is, uh, the rep here?
I am. Um, I, my phone is, uh, I have bad internet connection, so I apologize.
No problem. So.
And I work for AT&amp;T.
So I'm actually gonna, not for any legal reason, but just for clarifications, I'm going to turn the, the questions of this over to Stuart because he's done more work on this and understands it much better than I do. Stuart, if you want to ask the questions, please do so.
All right. Well, the first, thank you, Peter. The first thing I'd like to do is just to give, um, uh, Brenda Blask Lewis, a brief opportunity to, um, give us a synopsis of what the application's all about and why you're before us. If you could do that, please.
Okay. Uh, yep. Um, AT&amp;T is proposing to, uh, basically take down, do some maintenance of their equipment. So they're going to take down some existing equipment and install newer technology, um, in the forms of antennas, radio units. Um, and then they believe that they're installing, um, a couple of new, uh, DC power lines, DC trunks, cables, whatever you want to call them. Um, so the base, you know, nothing's going to, they're going to do nothing that's going to increase the height of the tower and they'll make no changes to the base station. So they're not going to increase the, the footprint of their existing lease area. And that's, that's basically the gist of it. So they just want to put up some newer technology.
Okay. So, um, um, uh, let, let me dive into this a little deeper if I can.
Sure.
And I, I just want to raise an issue with my fellow board members. Um, uh, we can take up at another time, but the, on the agenda of this matter, um, the applicant's listed as, the applicant is listed as the Town of Woodstock and Crown Castle on behalf of New Singular PCS LLC. Um, and yeah, when I looked at the applications, um, uh, Brenda, if I call you by your first name, which is faster.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Okay. You, um, you signed, uh, on behalf of Centerline Communications as agent for, um, uh,
New Singular Wireless.
New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, uh, parentheses with AT&amp;T. So can you explain to me who Centerline Communications is and hat and what their connection is to AT&amp;T?
Yep. The, um, Centerline Communications represents AT&amp;T. Uh, we handle, you know, what, in these situations, we'll handle all the permitting. Um, we, we submit the COLO application to Crown Castle because they actually own and manage the tower. So we have, we make application to them and saying, we're going to take down this equipment and going to install some new equipment. Um, they prepare the structural analysis. We prepare the mountain analysis and the construction drawings. So the, the relationship is we're just a tenant on the tower managed by Ca- Crown Castle. And I, I understand that the Town of Woodstock actually owns the, the parcel that the tower's on.
Okay. And you, and you said, uh, actually you put the word let's see after your, uh, your signature on the application. So, and you described your, uh, AT&amp;T as a tenant or who's the tenant? Is it Centerline?
Oh, AT&amp;T is the, is the tenant. Centerline is just the vendor that represents AT&amp;T in, in these, in these matters.
Okay. So.
So we do, we, we handle their real estate, basically.
I got you. And so if AT&amp;T is a tenant, then who's the so-called landlord? Who's leasing them the space?
Crown Castle.
Crown Castle?
Yeah, cause.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say Crown Castle is the one that they, they gave us a letter of authorization to, to submit a, an application before the board so that they actually manage the tower. They, they, essentially they own the tower.
Right. But there, there is a written lease is there that gives AT&amp;T the right to be down there? And have you seen the lease? Have you seen the lease?
Yes, I have.
Would you be able to supply us with a copy?
Yep. I can send you a redacted copy of, of what we have. It's, it, I mean, there's an agreement between AT&amp;T and Crown that's a, it's a master lease agreement. And then there's a, there's what they call a site lease agreement or SLA. Um, and that's what, you know, that's what I can show you is, is that or the, any amendments because it's been amended over time.
Okay. I mean, and what would you be redacting? Financial information?
Financial. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I appreciate if you can forward that into Melissa because we want to understand fully the status of, of your status here in AT&amp;T. So, okay, thank you. And, um, uh, the plans that, uh, you've submitted has the phrase, quote, 5G retrofit, close quote, in, in one of the block information blocks. Are, are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Can you explain to me what your understanding of that is and why that phrase 5G retrofit is, is included?
Um, my understanding is, is that the 5G is just a, another, it's a technology that they're using. It's an antenna that goes on the tower. It's going to be one of the antennas that they take down an old one and that's going to be one of the replacement antenna.
And is it your understanding that the, uh, the, the new antennas that are going up on the tower will be 5G capable?
I believe so.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I can find out definitively, but that's my understanding.
I mean, my, my layman's, uh, reaction to this is that you're upgrading equipment in order to enable, uh, the, the, uh,
Newer.
The newer 5G technology, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Why else would they call it a 5G retrofit? Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. And, and are you familiar with the number of antennas that are presently on the tower with for AT&amp;T?
Yep. I believe there are six and they're going to, I'm, I'm sorry. They're, let's see, they're taking down four, they're putting up two. Yeah. I think that there's six. Hold on, let me just pull up their COLO application. Get out of here. The nice thing about being from home, I can actually have access to this.
Well, that's a plus.
It is. And it's cold out. Who wants to go outside in the cold? Okay. COLO application. I know. Let me see what the existing equipment is. Okay. Should be the existing. Oops. Apologize for this.
That's all right. I mean, I, I read them as a layman. I just want to make sure that I'm reading them the same way that you are in terms of the plans. I saw six antennas up there presently.
Yeah, and they're.
Three in, three in the alpha sector and three in the beta sector and none in the gamma sector.
In gamma sector. Yep.
Right.
Yeah. I've got, I actually, before I prepare the new application, COLO applications, I usually print off an exist, uh, set of what's existing on the tower and that they're going to replace. And it looks like they have six currently on the tower.
Right. And so.
And they're going to remove two and re- and, uh, remove four and replace it two.
Right. Okay. And, um, uh, there's also information in your plans about indicating that these are panel antennas. Is that your understanding as well that you like rectangular panels? Okay.
Yep.
And, um, in terms of the dimensions of the antennas, uh, are you able to tell me, um, whether there's any difference in the size of the antennas that are going in compared with those that are coming off?
Um, yep. They, they, they're going, they're essentially the same. Um, the, the ones that are going up are going to be ninety-six inches high by sixteen by seven point eight. And the existing are ninety-six point three by fifteen point four by four point seven. So there's not a, a huge difference.
Right.
Um, and then they're, they're going to re- the, the ones that are staying on the tower are two of the KMW antennas that are EP BQ, so it's ninety-six, twenty-one, six point three.
So when I looked at it, they all look comparably, you know, the same.
They are comparable.
There's no market increase in, in the area, which is something that we would be concerned about. And as you're actually going to have two fewer antennas when this work is done than you do now, right? You're going down from six to four. Okay.
Six to four. And, and they're also removing the, the TMAs that are currently installed and the duplexers are coming down and not being replaced.
Right.
So that, that reduces the loading some more from the tower.
Okay. So it seems to me, other than the, uh, these antenna changes that we discussed, the big change is going to be, there's going to be five J, five G capability now on the tower for AT&amp;T where there wasn't before. Do you agree with that?
Yep. Yeah. I think.
Okay. Okay. Um, those are the only questions I had in terms of the, uh, technical aspects. I do have some other questions, but I'll hold them in case any other, uh, board members want to ask questions about what has come out so far. John, John has his hand up.
I do. Um, I just wanted to know, what is this providing to the Town of Woodstock, to the people of the town as far as any additional coverage, power, speed, whatever?
I believe that, I mean, the, if it's 5G technology, that, that's a faster, that, you know, that's faster speed. But it, it ba- it basically is just performing maintenance to the existing equipment because this, what's up there now is getting older. You have newer technology. So they're just, they're just upgrading. So it's going to be essentially the same service. Uh, it's not going to provide additional coverage because it's not, you know, they're not asking for a, a height increase for their antennas. So essentially it's just swapping like for like.
This is the antenna portion of this. What about the transceivers?
The radios?
Yeah.
They're, they're increasing, I think, they're just kind of swapping out in the existing radios. But that really is the same thing. It's just, it's just, you know, including newer equipment. You know, we, equipment gets old. You know, you can, they come up with new stuff all the time. So it's really not going to change much of anything. It's, they're just performing routine maintenance on the tower. But at least when it comes to their equipment.
Routine maintenance moves us from what is currently 4G to 5G to comply with your company-wide movement to go to 5G.
Yes. But I mean, it, it's, it's just 5G versus 4G is, it's, you know, same thing as when they went from 3G to 4G. It's just newer technology. Nothing else is, really nothing else is changing. They're just putting up newer antennas.
Stuart, I see Judy has her hand up.
Okay, Judy?
Well, I want to point out that 5G is a matter of high controversy in this town. And it is not quite as bland a matter as you're making it sound, ma'am. There's a lot of opposition to it.
But this, I mean, it's, it's part, it's within AT&amp;T's lease, you know, their, their licenses to be able to put up, uh, to change out their equipment. Um, I believe that the, the application really before the board is whether or not this is an eligible facility. And, you know, so the AT&amp;T can, you know, apply for a building permit. I mean, they're not increasing the height of the towers. They're not increasing the, the size of the lease space. So it, it mean, it's a choi- it's a matter of is this a just a, an eligible facility request or isn't it? I mean, it's, I don't believe.
I'm not, I'm not the person qualified to answer that.
Okay.
You will be soon, I think, Judy. I, I have a question, um, a, a further question. Brenda, what, you've said that, uh, you've, how should I ask this? In your applications, you've indicated that Crown, Crown Castle is the owner of the tower itself. What's the, what's the basis for you saying that?
I mean, that's, that's who our lease is with. We lease space off on the tower from Crown Castle. So they're the lessor. Um, if there's, you know, the underlying, you know, the ground owners is the Town of Woodstock. So you ha- you must have a lease yourself with Crown Castle for the, for the ground.
Well, I don't.
So I mean, we're, we're just leasing space from Crown.
I understand that. So your, your, your conclusion that they own the tower is based on the fact that they've given you a lease saying that they're the lessor and, and you're the less C.
Yes.
I don't want to get too technical about it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the basis of it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, the other question I wanted to raise, um, is that, you know, if, if this is an eligible facilities request, there's a sixty-day shot clock that we've learned about. And I'm sure you're familiar with it. And, but I also want you to understand that from the planning board's perspective, and a very important part of our process is to have the ability to hold a public hearing on all applications so that members of the public can come before and ask questions and fully grasp what's being proposed and weigh in and, and ask questions and express their points of view about it. And, and, you know, that's an important part of our process. And, um, I just wanted to know if, if, if you, as the applicant's representative, uh, if the applicant would be willing to suspend the shot clock until we can hold our public hearing so that it wouldn't keep running until, it would pick up running after the public hearing again so that we could have, uh, you know, a brief period of time to schedule the hearing, get out whatever notices we're required to do and so on. I'm not exactly sure. Maybe Melissa can tell.
Yeah, I, I mean, as a, they, they don't suspend the shot clock unless you re, unless our application is incomplete, that, that would be what would suspend the, the shot clock.
Well, I understand that. We, we could initiate, we could get it suspended even without your consent if there were information that were needed to assess whether it's an eligible facilities request. I, I understand those rules. But you also have, the parties also have the right to agree amongst themselves to suspend the shot clock for whatever period of time they want to agree upon. And I'm not asking that to be suspended forever, but, um, we do have certain requirements in order to schedule a public hearing. And I just don't want to run afoul of our, our ability. I don't want to undermine our ability to have the public come in and put questions and, and be heard on this before we have to decide the, the application. So that's why I'm asking, um, if AT&amp;T would agree to it.
I can, I can ask them, but as a general rule, they, they have never agreed in the past to, to suspend the shot clock unless there's, unless it's been brought to our attention that there's something missing from our application.
All right, well, thank you for your answer. I, I requested it and, um, I appreciate if you would take it up with them and see if they would.
Yeah, I will take it.
Record us a brief, uh, suspension. Melissa, what's the, uh, are there notice periods of time that have to be accorded before we can actually get the, um, a public hearing scheduled? Do you have to put notices in the paper or, or, I can't hear you.
You're mul, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted. I didn't want you to hear me snuffing my nose. Um, yes, right, like if the closest public hearing that I could pull off would be December second.
And that's complying with all whatever notices we have to send out and all that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I will be away during that time, just heads up.
If that's what you want me to do, we, we can do that. It just, there's, um, Brenda, I know you had emailed me the site plan review, but there's also a hundred dollar application for the site plan review application also.
Okay, in addition to the check that we already, we sent in that re, I got the receipt for?
Yes, there, so you did the special use permit application, remember? At first you, you didn't do the site plan review application? Yeah, so the, yeah, so there's just another hundred dollar, if you could just work with your accounting department and request that, we, if the board, I'll, I'll work that for the application, the site plan review application.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, and, and you should have received the escrow check, um, by UPS this morning.
I did today. I did today. Thank you. I, I did today. Thank you.
Right, so I, I'm gonna, uh, Brenda, I'm just gonna repeat a little bit of what I said. I'm gonna ask that you ask your, uh, uh, ask AT&amp;T, your principals, whoever you're dealing with, if they would agree to suspend the shot clock until we can conduct the public hearing, uh, on December second. Um, and then, you know.
I'm going, I'm going to.
Because there is a lot of interest in the town in, in, in the subject matter of this application.
But, I mean, I, how does the, I understand the public hearing and I don't think that AT&amp;T would, would disagree that we would attend as a courtesy. But the, really, what they're requesting according to sixty-four oh nine is whether, is for the board to determine, is this or isn't this an eligible facilities request? And it clearly it is because there's an existing, um, you know, they, they have existing equipment on the tower. So, you know, that, that's basically a yes or no. But I mean, I, I will, I will definitely ask them if they would agree to that, but I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm probably gonna say that they won't agree to that.
Well, I appreciate if you would take it up and let us know what the answer is.
Yeah, not a problem.
And you also send us a redacted copy of, of the lease that we talked about. Of the lease.
Absolutely.
Okay, and John, you had your hand up.
Oh, well, first of all, the shot clock's not gonna start until we receive the fees for the pro, for the review.
Well, we just, I just learned tonight of the, of the additional one hundred dollar fee that you guys do have a hundred dollars for the, I believe it was for the, um, special use per, permit application and the twenty-three hundred dollar or twenty-five hundred dollar, um, escrow fee. That, that was, um, delivered today. Because we didn't find that out until, um, after the application was submitted. So it's just a hundred dollars, uh, fee that's left to be paid. And I can send, uh, you know, a check for that and, you know, for my own, you know, from, I can send it. So rather than requesting a check from accounting, I can just send you guys a check of my own so that we can get that in as soon as possible.
Melissa, do you want to comment on that?
No, I think that's fair. Um. Right, Stuart?
Sure, as long as she gets reimbursed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Shot clock start when we receive the check.
I can verify. I, I mean, I, I believe that, that, that's technically accurate. Um, so I, I mean, that would delay, I could have my check to you overnighted by, and you'd have it probably Monday morning. Obviously, it's too late to get to UPS, um, tonight. But, so then the shot clock would start as soon as that, that second check is delivered.
We just, we just want to make sure.
But I mean, and, and if that were the case.
And we are all in agreeance for the shot clock, Brenda. That, that's it. That's, the board's asking for us that we all are aware of the date of the shot clock. So the board can do due diligence for this application.
Yeah, and, and I mean, the shot clock hasn't been running for that long right now. You still have enough time to, to hold a public hearing, um, and be done with it, well within the sixty-day time, time period.
Okay, so I'm looking at December second. Just, that's what I'm gonna do for the public hearing.
Okay.
Application.
Okay.
Shot clock is not running.
What's that?
No, the shot clock is not running yet.
That's, that is my position.
Yeah.
Okay, was, so that, do you want to agree that when the one hundred dollar check is received by your office, the shot clock does, then commences?
So, yeah, here's the deal. I mean, we, we run into this frequently and then people act surprised when, when our requirements aren't met. And so this is not an original issue with us. So whatever happens on your end, please get the necessary fees in. And when that happens, in this case, then a shot clock starts.
Okay, yeah, I, like I said, I, I, all of the fees, until I just learned about an additional one hundred dollar fee tonight. Um, and I will get you a check, uh, like I said, I wrote it out of my checkbook and I'll have it in, in UPS's box, um, tomorrow. And you guys have it by Monday.
Um, could I ask a quick question?
Connor has a question.
Yeah, I want to ask the board.
Speak louder, Connor, if you can.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, I can hear you.
Here, I'll, I'll get, you hear me well.
Now?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm wondering, uh, for mo, some of the more senior members of the board, in terms of an eligible facilities request, um, does an expansion of use factor into those decisions or no? No?
Well, I, I, I don't want to speak for the applicant. My, my understanding is that it's an eligible facilities request if it substantially expands the, increases the physical dimension of the tower. And that, that has certain meaning in the FCC laws, but, um, expansion of use, you mean from 4G to 5G? Is that what you mean?
Well, and, and, and again, I, I don't care who knows it. I'm not a skeptic when it comes to 5G. I'm just curious about a couple of things. I mean, as a, you know, we can get into the technicalities of it, but yes, I mean, if the, i, if the amplitude is to increase, if 5G, you know, uh, can cover a wider area, I'm just wondering if that is in all, i, in any sort of fashion and expand, considered an expansion of use?
No, I mean, under, my understanding of sixty-four oh nine is that, is if we substantially change the, the tower itself as far as like increasing the height or increasing the size of the base station, which would be your lease area, like if our, if the footprint of our equipment was going to expand and say we had to bump out the, the fence or something and, you know, because we're gonna add more equipment. But they're not, they're gonna stay at the same rad. They're gonna do nothing to the ground space. It's gonna cause it to be increased in size. So, I mean, there's no substantial change to the tower. I don't believe it applies to whether or not, you know, they're putting out a stronger signal from the antennas. That doesn't, that doesn't factor in.
You see, Connor, that, you, whether, whether the ability to transmit over a farther distance, let's say, that may raise other issues, but it doesn't affect whether it's an eligible facilities request, which is a technical term of art under the federal laws.
And that's, and that's the only reason I was asking about it because, you know, we do consider that, you know, when people come to us for expansion, uh, of, and I wonder, you know, it, it, whether it just applies to the physical space, um, because this is a little bit more, I don't know, ethereal for a lack of a better term, but thank you. That was really my only question.
Okay, no problem.
So, uh, okay. Um, I don't have any, any more questions. Is, is anyone else on the board have any questions that wants to ask the applicant?
No. No.
All right, so hearing none, I guess we have, we should discuss the next steps. My suggestion is to put it on for a public hearing, on December second and send all the appropriate notices out so the public knows, uh, of this application and the information that we obtained and, um, they can have an opportunity to weigh in on it. My own sense of it is that, you know, it likely will, will qualify as an eligible facilities request, but, you know, I'm, I'm reserving on that. I want to take another look at the plans and so on and revisit the, uh, dimensions and so on. But, um, if that's the case, it's still important, it's still important for this board to have the public be given an opportunity to come before us and, uh, talk about the application and tell us what, what they want to tell us. And so we can consider that.
All right, so. I'm sorry.
Connor?
I was just gonna say, and I know you had brought it up before, that, you know, AT&amp;T would, uh, send someone to the public hearing as a courtesy. And whether it was you or somebody else, I just want to say it would probably go a long way to have someone who is, you know, technically literate. Because while we're looking at a, uh, at an eligible facilities request, I just can anticipate a lot of questions, uh, on the, let's just say, amateur engineering questions coming your way.
Oh. Counting on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I don't know if they'll, if AT&amp;T will, will send somebody like an RF engineer. I can, I can always ask, but I don't know if they'll do that because this is just a courtesy because, you know, they, they considered this is under sixty-four oh nine. This should be considered an eligible facility. This is, is what their position is. So technical questions about the equipment going on the tower, I don't know if they'll, they'll send an engineer with me. Because I would be the one attending.
I'm just, uh, putting it out there to say, you know, because like I said, I'm not myself a skeptic. I don't care who knows it. But, uh, there are going to be people who would want to hear that and just.
Counting on it.
And while I may disagree with them, I will, you know, defend their right to, uh, to ask those questions and have them answered as, as best you can.
Okay.
All right.
I will let, I will let AT&amp;T know.
And this is Woodstock, so saying, well, it's the new technology, live with it, does not fly.
So easily.
Understood.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna, uh, turn the matter back over to Peter if he has anything else he wishes to do on this, but, um, okay?
I have one question. Stuart, can you, we, can we? How you want me to categorize the title? Can we talk about that at some point?
Well, sure. Um, um, well, you had it as the town of Woodstock and Crown Castle on behalf of, uh, I don't have memory, but New, New Singular or Centerline.
Yep.
AT&amp;T. But the town has not, uh, made the application and neither has Crown Castle, so I don't think it's proper to list them on the agenda as being, uh, the name of the case. I think the name of the case should be, uh, Central, well, Central Line Communications as agent for AT&amp;T. Yeah, is that okay with you, Brenda?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, because that, that makes more sense. I mean, just put the town as a, as a la, a property owner.
Right, but that's, question is asked in every, in every application, but, but in this case, uh, Centerline on behalf of, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Peren AT&amp;T, closed peren, is the applicant. So I think that's what it should be. To, to, again, to remove any notion that the town board has looked at this application or weighed in on the application or is supporting it. I don't know if they even, you know, have even seen it. So we shouldn't be telling, we shouldn't be telling the public through an agenda that the town and Crown Castle have made an application that they haven't made. That's all. I don't want to, misunderstanding going down the line.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Centerline Communications as an agent of AT&amp;T?
No.
Yep, yeah, we, we act as, as their agent, so that would work.
But it's, is, then who's New Singular?
New Singular Wireless is just like a, it's a formal legal entity name. It's AT&amp;T. So it's, you know, Verizon, Verizon goes by many different names. AT&amp;T does the same thing.
So you want me to leave it as, as I have it?
Actually, be Centerline Communications, um, as agent for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
And then parentheses.
Slash AT&amp;T or parentheses AT&amp;T, because that's.
That would work. That's perfect.
Take out.
So like I have it and take out County Woodstock.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That works.
Okay, it's also some, okay, so, um, that's all I have to say today, but I do look forward to your sending Melissa the lease that we talked about, redacted. And, um, and also an answer to the question about, uh, suspending the shot clock until the public hearing is held. Okay. That's all I have, Peter, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stuart, for getting through that one.
You're welcome.
And so what we have next, and I apologize for being so far behind. Uh, we have a draft for possible Xena Woods CEA and draft memorandum. I don't know if Judy was gonna introduce the speaker?
Um. Oh, we were just gonna discuss it and then we, the speaker was last meeting. Judy, right?
Yeah, but Alex is here, Maxanna's here, there are lots of people who can speak to it if necessary.
Okay, but this was just, you guys wanted to discuss a little further and then we're, we're being asked to endorse the working group and send the memo that you guys had received that a few people had tweaked. Brian Chee tweaked, Judy tweaked. Last, the final edit was with Brian's corrections and the goal is to get them a memo tonight just saying that we endorsed them. Good summation?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the point here is we underwrote the existence of the working group. And we were one of three towns in the Hudson Valley that received this technical support through, through Cornell University. Um, it's been an amazing experience. I think it is gonna result in a really important contribution to the ecology of the town and to finally the economic value of the town in the, in the alerting of our body and future bodies and WEC to the importance of this area and the importance of treating it properly. Unless the town board passes regulations that specify particular kinds of behavior like they do with wetlands, it is only advisory, but it's important. It's educational to landowners. It's educational to us.
Okay. So Melissa, um, we have what we're going to send to the town board with our blessings with all the work that's been done by this group.
Yep, I just need you all to okay it.
Don't move.
Okay. Stuart, you had a question?
Uh, no, I'm in favor of it. I appreciate all the work. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done on the board and, um, actually as group and everybody else.
So, uh, so, uh, let me just ask, is everybody in favor on the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, very good, folks. Okay, very good folks. All right.
Alex, I'll get that to you before I leave tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. So unfinished business, well, excuse me? Okay, unfinished business. Well, John wanted to bring up the creation of the subcommittee. Do you still want to talk about that, John, or did you?
I think a lot of it has already been discussed.
Right, right, right.
But I am concerned about how we go forward when it comes to this designation and the workings of scenic overlay. And for some degree, you know, the floodways and the way they've used over the decades. So I would like very much to have some sort of a committee that would continue. I realize that the committee that both you and Judy have been serving on has one more meeting. That's it. Is that correct?
Actually, no. I mean, we've done what we had to do for the DEP, or DEC, so it's for the state in other words. So now it's going to the town. The committee is going to present to the town board this proposal for the critical environmental area in the Xena Woods.
Well, critical environmental area is being designated in more parts of Woodstock than just the Xena Woods.
Alex had a question or a statement?
Yeah, hi, hi guys. So Peter, just, I just want to be clear. I mean, I spoke to John earlier today. We talked about this a bit. The group that Peter and Judith have been a part of and myself and Maxan and Arlene with Hudsonia and with Gretchen does have one more meeting. Officially under that guise of the Hudsonia training. So that's finished after the 7th of December. So if there was something that anyone wanted to continue with, it would be outside of, I mean, it could even be, you can call it whatever you want, but it will be outside of that. Everything that comes, Peter, from now until the state okay's this, if we take it all the way forward, will be without that group. It'll be us on our own and kind of bringing it through the town board. So Gretchen and Hudsonia and the training are finished. December's the end.
Meaning that technical assistance will be gone.
You ready?
Well, it seems to me that there are two issues that remain after that. One is that a lot of us are going to show up for the town board meeting and we devoutly hope that the town board will endorse it and it will go forward to the state. That being done, we would still, I assume everybody on the committee would agree with this, hope that the town would take action in the form of legislation to regulate within that area. I know Peter's talked about increasing buffers and maybe connecting buffers. There's a lot that could be implemented or not. The town could approve it, it could go to the state, the state could approve it, and that could be nothing more than education for the planning board. But it would be very good if it was more than that. And it may be that as we talk about things like the scenic overlay, that we also want to talk about things like, for example, family acres, places where these kinds of sensitivity are very visible. And in the case of the CEA, it's made visible by the work we've done and hopefully by its designation. And then the question is, what does that do to our process?
What, Judy, is there any benefit to looking at the entire scenic overlay district as a CEA?
Well, you know, John, we discussed it as a group.
Head, no.
I think the reason they said no was that it's already very significantly protected by the overlay. And so they were looking for an area, we were looking for an area in the form of the lowland forest that is otherwise not protected.
But this is also, also scenic overlay has regulatory power and the and the CEA is really a reminder to really write a smart plan and remind your applicants of what's to be considered from an ecological point of view.
The town chooses to put regulatory power behind it.
Right. But the scenic overlay already is the law and you just need to tighten it to make it more effective.
Right. And there are people who think that Yankee Town Con is a CEA and it's not. It has its own particular set of rules, but it's not a CEA. Right.
And please forgive me, when is this being presented again?
November 9.
To the town board.
Next week.
Yep.
No, November 9, that's what it was. No?
No.
November?
November 9. On Tuesday, it will be presented to the town board. And then if the town board wants to move forward with it, they would schedule a public hearing and then they'll have to vote on it.
Got it.
Is the town board meeting virtually or in person?
Yeah, that's my next question.
Virtually.
Virtually.
That's what I had heard. And Gretchen will be there to make a presentation similar to what she did with us.
Now speaking for everybody else's schedule, I'm guessing we should, it would probably behoove us to attend that meeting, right? If we can. Yeah. And Melissa, how did you get an invite to that?
Ashley Swedenski, if you guys want to shoot me an email, I can forward them to her to make your lives easier. And she'll send you the Zoom link on the day like I do.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was a little confusion too, John. The December meeting is our scenic overlay discussion.
I understand.
Okay.
That's not.
Okay, any other questions regarding that? If not, we need to approve a resolution for the Van de Bogart case. If.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the Van de Bogart. Obviously, we're not doing Swan errands. And the site visits. James did a site visit with John. You guys did a site visit for Early Terrible, I think it was?
We did.
And how'd that work out?
Looked great. I mean, I think he's in compliance with everything that's needed and I don't see any reason why it can't be approved.
Well, Brian was there.
Brian went, I'm sorry.
It was Brian that.
Three of them.
I went today, John.
Oh. All right, that's good. So everything's good there. I did the site visit for the stock.
All right, wait, hold on. For Early Terrible, are we scheduling a public hearing?
Yes, in my opinion.
Perfect.
Brian?
Yes, Brian?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now stop. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, I did the stock visit. It's at the Engines of Valley View Way. It's a subdivision of the stock property. It's making a lot for their, maybe for their mom to retire in. The site itself is very flat. There's absolutely no wetlands anywhere nearby. It's well drained because it's on top of the old run of bank quarry. In fact, there's test pits for the SDA was dry as a bone after all that rain. The big test pits were dry. The driveway going in, they've got their curb cut. It's an old, it's a logging road that goes down to the site. There's no steep slopes or it's a very quite simple driveway. So there's really no, it's a very, and it's not in the scenic overlay. So. So, yeah, that's, it's all good there. So I think you can schedule that for a public hearing, Melissa.
Perfect.
All right, folks, anybody else?
One more, Arnstein. We had a site visit for Arnstein for the footbridges. I think Brian and James went.
James, you want to go first?
Well, yeah, I met Brad over there. I don't know if it's the building department that's technically approving the footbridges, right?
Yes, I think so.
I would think so.
We don't have any good footbridges.
No.
He showed me where they're going. It looks like they're going in a proper spot.
Right, but it's very small, the amount. Sorry that I said footbridges, but it's very small, the amount is the reason why they're here, right?
Right. I mean, the housing, he had very clearly the maps laid out. Yes, the front house slightly touches onto the area that can have some overflow flooding, but he has proper building for it, for venting, for floodwater, all that. And the rest of the property is not in that area and it seemed seemed like he's thought out what he has to be doing for that one corner of that one house. Certainly farther away than the original structures were, so.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a good improvement, that's for sure.
Much improved.
Much improved. All right, everybody, it's been a long one. Anybody, any more questions or issues? Yep, Stuart?
Yeah, don't yell at me, okay?
I was thinking about it.
AT&amp;T, yell all you want. The one thing, besides the revision to the agenda title, which we discussed, I notice there's nothing in there about that this is a 5G retrofit. And it's not a criticism or anything, but I think that's probably the single most important item from the public's point of view, that if they read the blurb and they don't see anything about 5G, they may think, well, they may think we pulled the wool over their eyes because we didn't put it in there. You know what I'm saying? I'm suggesting that, yeah, in front of the words where you say modifications to site plan to remove four antennas and so on, in front of, just before the word remove, I would insert there, so modifications to site plan to perform a 5G retrofit, comma, remove four antennas and so on and so on. So at least those with eagle eyes will see, whoa, 5G, you know, and they'll come, they'll have their say and then we can respond as we will and.
Don't we say 5G capable rather than 5G?
Well, titled as retrofit, so I like that we're taking.
It's their language on their plans, Judy. They call it a 5G retrofit, so I just assumed stayed with that. You know, and then the parties that be will see it and they're interested, they'll come down. And if they don't come down, they don't come down, but.
You wish.
I mean, I have it written down. Just email me because I'm feeling sick.
John?
Oh, the ironic part about this, this retrofit is for one reason only. It's for them to make more money because all this does is to make their system a little faster. They can handle more calls. It does not increase the transmission. It does not aid the town at all. There's no increase in coverage area. There's no increase in distance, nothing, because their power is limited. So, I mean, you know, this is really for their benefit only.
Well, I have a comment to that that I'm going to make. I know the hour is late, but the town owns the tower. You know, Brenda said that Crown Castle owns the tower and whether they're an owner for purposes of zoning, I'm not going to get into that, but but the town owns the tower and in the agreement that the town had with JNS to construct the tower back years ago, it expressly says, I looked at it again today, that upon completion of construction, ownership passes to the town of the tower. So as I'm concerned, they own both the land and the tower. So, you know.
There was one little glitch to that one. In the original tower, it's going to be visible. The town decided that they would allow them to make it a Franken tree and therefore gave up the first 10 years of lease payments.
Yeah, it's five years, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. Right.
But though at the end of that lease period, indeed, the town had total control.
So, you know, let's see where we go with that. I'm not looking to raise a big issue about ownership if they're considered an owner under the zoning and I have to look at that. But I know somebody out there looks like they're raising their hand, but this is not a public hearing anymore, so stop raising your hand, please. It's kind of distracting. I don't know who that is. Mr. Monster.
Monster up.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so the point I wanted to make was, as the owner of the tower, they own it as a proprietor, just like a store owner owns a store. He can say, what's the air quality in the store? What kind of flooring does he want? How many people does he want to lend at any one time? And under the laws, I've researched it and I've seen the FCC agrees with me on this, that owners of towers, be they private entities, municipal owners of towers have a proprietary right, just like a store owner has, to decide what terms they're going to bargain on on such things as frequency output, increase in equipment, changing the equipment. We don't have that because the federal law views us as a regulatory body and so we're bound by whatever the restrictions are in terms of 60 days. We have to approve it if it's an eligible facilities request and so on. But ultimately, the town board as proprietor, in my view, has much more power in this situation to decide what the lease terms are going to be and if there are going to be any changes in frequency outputs by moving to 5G or 6G or 7G or whatever is down the line. They're not bound by the FCC standard for what's acceptable. They can set their own standards in order to decide what's in the health interests of the public. And so while our hands may be tied, ultimately, it's the town board that controls this. And I didn't want to get into that discussion with Brenda because it doesn't bear on whether it's an eligible facilities request and I don't want to consider anything that's beyond our purview as a regulatory body. But I'm just suggesting to you all that ultimately, no matter what we do, I think this goes back to the town board. They're the proprietors of the tower and they have a lot of power. And nobody's really, we haven't heard from them and I don't know what their view of this is, but ultimately, if there's a lot of 5G opposition that's voiced to us, I would see that ultimately shifting over to the town board and the town board's going to have to make a political or health judgment as to what they want to do in terms of how much radiation to allow emanating from the tower. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
All right, one more piece. If okay with you guys, the next meeting, just the Arnstein, we just need to do the wetlands findings just so I can prepare the resolution. So I'm going to schedule that in for the next meeting. Good? And then Brian and James can help. I'm good?
Sure.
Good. Okay, everyone, I've got a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for a very difficult night. Thank you all.
Take care.
I'll be interested to see what's in the newspaper. Oh, he did all right the last time.
Good night.
Makes me nervous though, every time. Good night.
Night.